Sorry, let me begin recording. Okay.
I always do that. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience. This is a special meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, February twenty seventh. As a reminder, we are being recorded and we see that we have a majority of the board present. So if we can have the roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Brought in, not present. When eventura?
Present.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Noel, not present. Shelby?
Present.
So well?
Present.
Stallings, not present. Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You'll note that trustee Noel has joined us, although he's not on video. For those of you familiar with our Brady Bunch grid here, you'll see at least one new face and really sort of two new faces. I do want to take this opportunity to welcome trustees, good and when I've entered a trustee, when I'm doing it was joining us for a meeting before, but certainly it's always good to to welcome new faces to the to the group. So thank you very much for being here, folks. We are going to move on for public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public are invited and encouraged to address the board on any item within our subject matter jurisdiction. Note that our staff will attempt to call people in the order in which you have raised your hands. If you are participating on the Zoom platform, there is a button at the bottom to raise your hand. See that at least one person has done that. If you are joining us by telephone, you can use star nine as a means of indicating your desire to address the board. Trustee Chen has just joined us. We've just called to order. Hi Lynn, so thank you for joining us. We are going to make the call for I am making the call for public comment. I've got one hand up so far. When you are recognized by the secretary, you will have three minutes to address the board. Thank you for joining us today.
First speaker is Benjamin Cone.
Hi, thank you. I see that you're going to be discussing proposed sale and leaseback of your headquarters building. To the extent you're going to do that, I hope it's because you intend to move into a cheaper facility and not because you intend to just lease long term what you already own. That if there, I know you're under budgetary challenges with the twenty twenty three budget right now, but to the extent you're just trying to get short term cash flow by selling the building because you can't budget effectively and then will use leasing as a crux. That will create a long term situation where it will be more expensive, create more budgetary issues down the road. If you're going to use the same space and you'll come back to the legislature asking for higher dues to pay for leasing that reflects higher costs in the future than what you would currently have to make pay to retain ownership of the building. Now, as far as the resolving the budgetary situation, the there does seem to be a big mismatch between adequate staffing for the programs like public records responses, admissions, compliance with nondiscrimination requirements and such things. That so I think that you probably do need to charge higher dues so that the services are effective. And I know you have to get the legislature to approve on that. I also know that they share some interest in some of the documents I've requested through public records requests as part of consideration for those fee bills. And have asked me to let them take the lead, I guess, requesting those rather than litigating the extensive denials of and delays of some of those records requests. But if you're more transparent with the legislature, I think they might be more willing to approve maybe some of these higher dues that are necessary to staff these functions that are out of compliance. And I hope that you do that transparency. I know they're interested in the testing accommodation rules revision, or at least certain members are. And so if you could provide more information on that to them too, I think they would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cone. Looks like we don't have any more hands. I will remind the trustees that we did receive one written comment, which has been provided to you. Madam Secretary, I'm assuming that will be made a part of the record.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to item seven zero one, I believe, on our posted agenda, which is the approval of the state bar final two thousand twenty three budget under business and professions code sixty one forty point one. This item is being presented by Chief Financial Officer, Arisari Montoya Chico and Finance Manager, Justin Ewer. Welcome, folks, which let you get get your audio going. Ready when you are. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So I am going to start my presentation of the final twenty twenty three budget, and I do have a slides to share. Also with me really quick is Justin Ewer. He's the finance manager who oversees anything related to the budget. So in case I need any questions or whatnot, Justin is also here. So I'm going to share my screen and then please let me know once you see it and I'll start the presentation.
We can see.
Okay. It's good to go. So this is my presentation of a of the state bars final twenty twenty three budget. So I'm going to go first through the where we ended up bar wide. And I'll and I'll go through that pretty high level. And then I'm going to go into the general fund budget where we where we are at, where we ended with the twenty twenty three budget for the general fund. And that will be most of my focus of of this presentation. I also have another another slide that I will present on admissions, the admissions fund. And finally, I'll have a slide also on the reserves where we anticipate where we are budgeting to end twenty twenty three for all of the for all of the funds in terms of the reserve balance. So first off, first off, this is where we ended bar wide for our twenty twenty three budget. And in here, I'm also presenting our twenty twenty two budget. So you can see the changes year over year. And you also you'll see the revenues and expenses and the overall deficit for twenty twenty three mil for twenty twenty three, excuse me, which is about seventeen million. For revenues, we we did increase our revenues by about thirteen million. And that was really, that's really just mostly due to grants. We have new and expanded federal grants and I alter revenue. So that's really what drove the increase in revenues bar wide. In terms of expenses, we had a net decrease of two million. And I think you guys have heard me say that we did have additional or higher, excuse me, personal expenses due to the cola that we just funded as well as married increases. And while those expenses did decrease, we actually increased, excuse me, we actually had a bigger decrease in professional services and building operation. And we did that purposely to try to manage our depleting reserves. And this is mainly going to be, you'll see it in the general fund. So that's kind of how we were able to achieve a bar wide decrease of a two million dollars in expenses from prior year. So that's seventeen million dollar deficit for twenty twenty three. It's it's really composed of three main funds and one being the general fund, which has about a four million dollar of deficit spending, and I'll discuss it in the following slides. As well as the admissions fund, which has deficit spending of about seven million dollars. And the last bit component is all the grant related funds. So there's deficit spending there of six million dollars. And now I'm going to go into the general fund. So I wanted to give a little bit of background and a refresher before I get into the details of the general fund of how we got to where we are. So in the January, we've met a couple of times in January and at the board meeting, I presented three different budget scenarios with different deficit spending. And that spending ranged from three million to eight million dollars. And after some discussion, the board directed as you guys directed us to develop a budget that had no more than six million dollars of deficit spending in the general fund. In addition to to certain cost cutting measures to achieve that deficit spending, which included a hiring freeze and to reduce travel, travel and meeting costs. So those amongst others is what we use to to reduce our spending. So after all of the assumptions were finalized and input into our budget, we actually came out with a four point three million dollar deficit spending versus six million dollars. And here, here is high level, the overall revenues and expenses for the general fund and our deficit. And I am also providing here a comparison of twenty twenty two. So you could see the change in revenues and the change in expenses to the prior year budget. Now I'm going to go through some of the assumptions that we did incorporate to get to this through four point three million dollar spending. Some of these we I had already covered in January. Some of these in additional ones, we had to tweak them a little bit. So the first one here is salary savings. We had initially anticipated or budgeted fifteen percent salary savings, which is still the same case. And then we did add the additional three month hiring freeze. However, in January, the budget that I presented in January, we had that hiring freeze for certain positions that were open at that time, but we actually are applying that three month hiring freeze all year long for all of the current and future vacant positions. So doing that plus the fifteen percent salary savings across the board was able to get us almost eleven million dollars in salary savings in the general fund. And of course funded in here is is the five percent cola that most most staff got as a result of the MOU we recently negotiated. Some attorneys actually had a ten percent cola and in the January budget, we had put all attorneys, most of the attorney classifications at a ten percent cola. However, really only two classifications got that ten percent cola. So that that change of attorney classifications actually helped us reduce our spending, our salary savings for the general fund. There was also a correction that we are an update really and the retirement contribution expense. We received an updated valuation since January. So we reduced the amount of that retirement contribution expense from three million to two point eight million to that. That helps saved quite a bit of money there to get our deficit spending lower. One, one additional expenditure that was not in our January budget was this additional almost half a million dollars of professional services that we are needing to fund for a certain rule twenty two oh one program that we've previously discussed. So we did fund that entire amount there. For we have debt collection revenue. We budgeted an increase there and it's a slight increase, but we did have the system that we use RevQ for transmitting any debt collection data to the franchise tax board to F T B. It was not working properly in the past couple of years. We finally got it more stable and and working better. So we are now remitting more data to F T B and we're such anticipating more collections. That's why we decided to increase our collection revenue there slightly. However, for the licensee fees, we actually budgeted flat licensee fees. That's why you see revenues in the general fund, which is mainly composed of licensee fees is almost flat, you know, only a three hundred thousand dollar change. And this this budget of a flat licensee fee is really based on admissions and licensee population trend data that our research office produces. And we just are anticipating pretty much not much growth, if any, in terms of attorney admissions. And you've heard me say also in terms of selling the building and budgeting our building operations and related debt service for the San Francisco building. We only budgeted six months. We went ahead and only budgeted six months. And obviously, that's with the assumption that we will sell the building by midyear. If we don't sell the building by midyear, then we will have to go ahead and fund the additional fifteen percent of the building operations and debt service. And we will have to do that in the midyear budget amendment that that I will present later this year. Continuing on to more assumptions. So we did also have significant reduction in travel and meeting costs. We only funded a hundred and fifty thousand of staff travel, which is a pretty significant reduction from what we were doing pre pandemic levels. I want to say it's probably a sixty percent reduction or so in the general fund of of travel costs. Also, we reduced the board meetings. Four of the six will be will be in person. The remainder will be virtual. Similar for all the sub entities, the sub entity meetings will only be two in person. Jenny is the only sub entity that will meet a hundred percent in person. However, instead of having two day meetings, it will be reduced only to one day. So also in here.
Clarify because that's a bit of a point of contention right now. The meetings are not reduced to one day. It's the amount of overnight. We had two overnights budgeted previously in this budget. There's only one overnight. So you can still have two days in meetings, but one overnight in between the two days.
Yes, thanks, Leah. So the IT spending, obviously, we we did fund just as I hadn't mentioned during our Jane, one of our January budget presentations, we we did fund IT spending that we that we really need for infrastructure, security, and also for the strategic plan initiatives. It's part of our strategic plan. There's and there was an addition. There is an additional funding of an external auditor and that's that external auditor will handle O C T C and some twenty two oh one related matters. We do have two new positions in O C T C that's supposed to support, excuse me, increase operational efficiency. So here really quick, we actually had, if we compare O C T C headcount positions from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty two, we actually have a total of fourteen new positions in O C T C. Two of these are obviously new in this twenty twenty three budget, but twelve of them were approved during twenty twenty two. And these positions that we funded are are war for the pilot program that's dedicated to the C T A related complaints and the bank reportable options. So in total, we've actually funded approximately fourteen positions. If you compare O C T C headcount in twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So I wanted to mention that. And then finally, we have additional budget for temporary help, temp help in the complaint review unit to help with the backlog of the complaint review unit cases. We funded additional temp help there. So now I'm going to move on to the admissions fund. This again, I'm presenting twenty twenty three versus twenty twenty two budgets. So you can see the changes in revenues and expenses. Admissions is we're projecting a deficit of seven million. And admissions was a little bit different in how how we developed the budget. We did have a similar similar revenue and expense pattern as twenty twenty two, just because of the nature of the operations of admissions and a lot of the travel and costs incurred administering the various exams that admissions is responsible for. We didn't budget any new positions, but we did, of course, budget and funded the cola. And we applied the same salary savings as also we did in the general fund. The key changes for revenue, the slight increase is really the exam fee revenues. I want to note that it is higher than budget, but in terms of actuals for twenty twenty two, our twenty twenty three budget is pretty flat in terms of actuals, but higher than than twenty twenty two budget. There was, of course, an increase in in personnel expenses due to the cola that was funded and married increases. There are certain exam related expenses that increased, but those were mainly due to higher proctor rates that we're having to pay as well as some side costs that are increasing to administer the exam. However, overall, we did have bigger.
Okay, finally.
We did have bigger decreases in services and the other remaining the other remaining line items in the admissions fund expenses and services decreased significantly. This is really due we eliminated the service agreement from P S I that was supposed to help us outsource the bar exam and proctoring site. So you see a reduction in in services, but you see the cost kind of shift to other expense line items within the admissions, within the admissions fund. We've, you know, we've discussed previously that admissions is in a structural deficit position. It has it is going to be ongoing. That's really mainly driven because far bar exam fees are relatively flat year over year. We've had lower exam applicants. And we've also have higher operating costs of the exams. So to try to manage the deficit for the admissions fund, we did for the beginning of twenty twenty three, we actually transferred all of the reserve balance from the legal specialization fund. We merged it into the admissions fund to ensure the solvency of this fund for twenty twenty three. And the legal specialization fund was a subset of the overall admissions fund. So we were able to move about a close to seven million dollars of reserves into admissions. So that's going to help fund all of the twenty twenty three expenditures. Going forward in twenty twenty four and beyond, there isn't going to be enough reserves to cover the operations. So right now we are going to be, we are discussing fee increases that we plan to bring back to the board in May to increase some of the bar fees for some of the admissions program fees, as well as we're doing an assessment of of what operating cost reductions we need to implement to be able to just cut costs in the admissions. However, these two, these two fee increases, potential fee increases and cost reductions will not take effect until twenty twenty four. Here is this slide that shows all of the reserve fund balances for all of the funds that we have. So you see that at the general fund, we anticipate ending twenty twenty three with eight million dollars or about eight point four percent. That is still below the target. The target is between seventeen and thirty percent. So we are continuing to fall below the seventeen percent in the general fund. Admissions, as I've mentioned, both of these funds, general admissions and and general funded admissions will have a structural deficit and will have to continue reserve spending. You know, absent any revenue increases or cost reductions. Two of the funds here are the lawyer's assistant program and the legislative activity funds. These two are above the thirty percent. And per the per the board policy, spend down, spend down plans are to be presented for any fund that has thirty percent or more of X's reserve. So in a later, in a later meeting this year, we will present the spend down plans for these two funds. And finally, the forecast. So we are required, we are required to present a two year forecast. It will always be the current year and the future year forecasts. So for twenty twenty four, the way we develop the forecast is through some of these assumptions. So we apply the C P I increase, which in this year was five point seven percent. So we apply that to most of the known expenses. Except for those that we know have actual certain increases, we we did those separately, but otherwise everything else we did a five percent excuse me, five point seven percent C P I increase. The M O U that we negotiated had colas for the next three years. So for twenty twenty four, the colas two and a half percent for all for our employees. So we applied that to personal expenses. We didn't budget any building operation expenses or debt service. Again, that's with the assumption that we will sell the building sometime this year. So the sale proceeds will be used to cover the leasing costs in twenty twenty four. And then we've had some discussions, particularly to the finance committee of some general program fees so that we've presented that we want to increase. So we did budget those increases based on those tentative proposals we've presented to the finance committee. And finally, the we do plan on developing a forecast, a five year forecast. We have an informal policy to do it every five years. So the last one we did was in twenty nineteen. So there's, we're due for another one in twenty twenty four and and we will actually be in a better position to understand the impact of the building sale by then. As well as the admission in general fee increases that we plan on proposing and presenting to to the board and finance committee later later this year. And that's stop sharing. That's all I have for the budget. Anybody has any questions on my presentation?
Thank you. So this is, you know, this is not the first time we've seen a lot of this. Certainly, the reduction in the deficit spending is a positive, a positive development. We're still deficit spending quite a bit. Any specific questions for Ms. Montoya Chico from the trustees? Trustee Good?
Hi, Ms. Montoya Chico. Um, I had a question about what the effect of the hiring freeze would be this year on the state bars overall F T E and or headcount. And I appreciate that you mentioned that O C T C won't really see a reduction because there were fourteen new positions created there last year. But I was just curious about what that impact was expected to look like. Thank you.
Okay, so let me go with your first question. Bar wide, what is the, what was the impact of the hiring freeze? Bar wide, not just general fund?
Yeah, I mean, you said that the bar is expected to realize ten point nine million in savings because of the hiring freeze this year. And I was wondering what the impact of that was going to be on F T Es or just, you know, number of employees.
So the ten point nine, so the almost eleven million dollars was the fifteen percent and the three month hiring freeze. So all of all of the salaries for the state bar of all the positions, I should say, we budgeted the fifteen percent salary increase. I think we have close to fifty vacant positions, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, close to fifty vacant positions. So what we will do is we will have to hold some of those positions open longer, longer than we normally would.
So Sarah, the fifteen percent salary savings is an estimate. It reflects our actual salary savings for twenty twenty two. That's just natural through attrition, you know, any organization. The three month hiring freeze, we apply to vacant positions. So in the general fund and the admissions fund only. So when a position becomes vacant, you have to leave it open for three months before you can fill it. And as Arisali mentioned, right now we've got about fifty vacancies. Not all of those are in the admissions in the general fund. But we will have vacancies that come up throughout the year that will be impacted by the three month hiring freeze. So you know, at the present time, that's something less than fifty positions and that number will change over the course of the year.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ray, please.
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the the reserves and you had, I think you indicated there was seventeen percent is are the reserves. My question is what the seventeen percent in reserves equates to how much operating costs that we can survive in in terms of time?
The seventeen percent is about two and a half month of expenses worth of expenses. And that is the board policy, the board. It's a board policy to have the reserves between seventeen, the low end is seventeen percent and the high end is thirty percent. But the seventeen is about two and a half months.
Okay. And then historically, can you give me an idea of where where we are in terms of how we depleted the reserves now versus before?
Can you elaborate? Like you mean, how much have we had deficit spending in prior years?
Yes, and and what, how much in terms of compared to where we are now?
I can probably get that for you. I can get that for you. I don't have the numbers handy. We we have been in a deficit spending the last couple of years and our reserves are obviously, you know, depleting. So you'll see our beginning, our beginning twenty twenty two or sorry, our beginning twenty twenty three reserve was twelve million. I think at the beginning of twenty twenty two, we were Justin, do you? Thirteen point four, so.
Or thirteen by nine, I think. So we did deficit spend in this year. And we had a fee increase in twenty twenty, the first fee increase in twenty years. And so that was we were dwindling down our reserves over the years prior to the fee increase. And then obviously this year we had to deficit spend somewhat, but like Arisali mentioned, we had a couple of things break our way that we, you know, the O P E B reevaluation kind of helped us come in at the end of the year. Some end of the year adjustments broke our way. So we didn't have to deficit spend as much as budgeted, but we anticipate having to deficit spend next year and going forward.
And just to give some context, prior to the fee increase, which included a special one time assessment to rebuild the reserve, that's important, not just the ongoing licensing fee increase. The reserve balance had been dwindling because as Justin mentioned, twenty years, no licensing fee increase. Then we got the reserve replenishment. But now we are back in a position where we are deficit spending because the actual ongoing revenue does not meet the operational needs of the organization. And just a bit of background on the seventeen percent. Years ago, the state bar was criticized for having a very high fund balance. This is before all of the reserve eat away. And then through work with the California State Auditor, we were directed or recommended to set set a reserve policy and that two and a half months or seventeen percent. I believe that we adopted that because that's what's in use by the trial courts in California, the judicial branch. We are part of the judicial branch. So that's how that seventeen to thirty was set. And that is what the special assessment was targeted or slated to fund.
Thank you. Thank you. Ray, you done? Looks like, yep, okay. Arnie, please.
Thanks for the presentation, Ariselli. And I know we've rolled around on this, you know, through the finance committee and at the board in a, in a couple of meetings. And so I, I appreciate us finally being able to, you know, get to the point where we can have a real clear picture of where it is that, that we stand relative to, you know, expenditures, reserves, et cetera. Couple of questions for me. One is on the hiring freeze. Is the, is the hiring freeze also going to be applied to OCTC? So if there are positions that do become available in OCTC, knowing, you know, that, you know, how much sort of scrutiny has been, been placed on the discipline system? Are we going to, is the three-month hiring, hiring freeze still going to hold with OCTC positions?
Yes, it has, it has to because OCTC is the vast majority of our general fund positions. So in order to realize that savings, we have to apply it to OCTC. And I don't want to speak for George, but I know that he has shared that because he's moving towards hiring folks in cohorts, wants to put people in certain points in time. He feels like this is, this is doable, given that structure.
Got it. My second question is, and Leah, you touched on this in terms of the, sort of the history of how we arrived at a a reserve policy. I just wonder if it's, I don't know if that was something that was dictated by or at least a recommendation in this, in this auditor's report previously. But I wonder, as the, as the chair of the finance committee, and if it, if that's something that we should just sort of take another look at. It, I'm more familiar with state budgets, and that is still a relatively high reserve amount. I didn't know it was actually pegged to the courts, but I'm just wondering, you and Ariselli's sort of, you know, sort of your, your best thinking, is that something that the finance committee should take another look at?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think it is. And Mark, I know, I know you brought this up as well before. So yeah, definitely something we can, we can look at this year.
Okay, and then my final question just has to do with, as I, where I started, which is I know that we, we've rolled around on, on a lot of these numbers. And, and as, you know, obviously, given, given more time, we've been able to become more precise. But as the, as the year rolls around, I'm just wondering, is there a better cadence for the board, just, just sort of given where we are budgetarily? Is there a better cadence that we should be making sure that the board and the finance committee is, is been, is, is being updated relative to where we are in terms of our spending plan? Ariselli, you mentioned mid-year, and I don't know if that's, if that's right. I don't know if it should be sooner than that. Obviously, the building will, will play, play a role in, in some of that. But I'm just wondering if there's a better cadence, and I know that we're kind of off-phase or out of step a little bit too in terms of closing out previous year. And so just, just wondering how all that should work.
So, you know, as part of our meetings, I will, I will be presenting a quarterly actual budget versus actual results on a quarterly basis. And those will happen, of course, quarterly at mid-year. At mid-years, where we do a full assessment again of where we are in terms of budget at mid-year. And if there's any adjustments that we need to make, whether it's, you know, reduce expenses or add additional expenditures or, or, you know, change our revenues, we do that at the mid-year. But in terms of budget versus actuals, I, I do present that, I will present that on a quarterly basis to the finance committee and in a higher, higher level up to the board.
Very good. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mark, Tony, please.
You're on. There we go. I think that's better now. Okay. So there's a couple of thoughts I wanted to share. I'm, I'm going to start off by really appreciating how much time the finance committee, the board, Ariselli, has spent on the budget this year. And that, that we've had time to give a lot of thought to this. And I think it's really model decision-making process to give ourselves the time. And, you know, I, I am going to support this budget because of that. But I want to let people know that it's very reluctantly, and I want people to know why I'm so reluctant about it. One is that, and I, and I hope we find a way to communicate this, this is an austerity budget. Any budget that is level in terms of revenue and spending, which this basically is, in the face of 5% to 10% salary increases represents a cut. Okay, there is, there is no way around that. And so this is an austerity budget. I believe it threatens the ability of the state bar to fulfill its core mission. And I've said that publicly, I say it privately, I am very concerned about this. I will support it, but, but I, I want my concerns to be heard. I'm I, on the question of format and presentation, it is, this budget in detail is breathtaking. I've never seen a 300-page budget before. I don't know if the rest of you have. I certainly never have. And it's quite impressive. It's very detailed. While we, while I'm fine with us voting on this today, I strongly encourage that what we submit to the state legislature is extremely abridged. 10 pages max, top. It's, this is actually too much information to share with outside entities. And, and the reason why is when you overshare, people are worried that things are buried, that important things are buried, and that if they haven't read page 156, though, meets, they'll miss something. So I, I just really want to strongly encourage that the absolute most important components are what are submitted. If you want to do the rest as an appendix, sure. But, but it's extremely important to have something that people can take a look at. And if people feel you have to do this, then a executive summary, four pages. The thing is that that is, that, that's more respectful than giving somebody else outside a 300-page budget to go through. So I just really want to strongly suggest that we do that, that I think that's important. I, I appreciate the work done here. I recognize it. Yep, those of you who know me know that I actually enjoy budgets a great deal, okay? So I have no issue with this at all. But when you present externally, there's value to being succinct and precise. So I strongly encourage that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mark. I, I will remind everyone that this, this is due to the legislature tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. I'm assuming it will be transmitted tomorrow. I don't know, Leo, whether you or Ariselli want to address Mark's concerns about an executive summary. But I would imagine the, the committees that receive this are used to receiving it in the manner that we're presenting it. But certainly, correct me if I'm wrong.
There is an executive summary, but it's not four pages. So I think that, that there is one, it might be 10 pages. There is an executive summary. I think that there's much to be desired or improved in terms of the overall format of the budget, however. And I, I think if we ever can stop being sort of behind the ball and get in front of it, staff will, will work on that. So I, I agree. It's long, it's dense. I don't love the format. I don't think any of us do. But there is an executive summary. I don't think we'll be able to make it shorter for tomorrow this time around.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Hyland, please.
Ariselli, could you explain? I just have a question about the item of building operations expense, which I noticed for many departments goes down as, from, you know, the 2023 expense is less than the 2022 expense. But for certain, but, but not by the same amount, you know, it just how, what is it that is building operations? And can you explain that item?
So included in there is utilities, right, telephone? And that, that varies by who's allocated to each, each fund, if you will, right, each fund or each office. What else is included in there, Justin? So I know there's telephone, there's utilities.
There's maintenance, there's repairs and equipment that's included in there that would be not necessarily operations like gas and electric and those things. So when you see variances of that, you'll see sometimes equipment purchases or something to do with that nature might cause a variance in that line item of building operations. It's not only operations, there are equipments and repairs and maintenance as well.
I see. And so it seems like, and so what, what's accounting for, in many situations, there's like a big decrease in the 2023 budget as compared to 2022. What's that attributed to?
The biggest decrease in building operations is the six months' worth of budgeting in the San Francisco Cost Center. So, but reducing that, and then another cost center is where we have our debt related. So only budgeting six months means we're only paying half of the months of their loan. And so you'll see a big reduction there as well. But it's mostly due to the San Francisco six-month budget.
Okay, and then I noticed there was one department for whom there was an increase from between 2022 and 2023, the Office of Professional Competence, and just wondered what that was about because it seemed to be counter to the other trend.
It's probably right, Justin, because the office grew. That their headcount grew.
Yeah, there was some reorganization throughout the budget. And I think, like Leah said, the Office of Professional Competence had more staff in there. And so like things like telephone and, and stuff would increase with the increased staff.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Like to move the motion?
Thank you. Motion by trustee Cesnedos. Second by trustee Soell. Madam Secretary, the role, please.
Bratton?
Yes.
Anna Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Yes.
No? Trustee Noel? I see trustee Noel is present.
He's unmuted. Greg, you're unmuted, sir.
My goodness, so sorry. You, you did call my name, was it right?
Yes, I did.
I, I have, I will approve the resolution, except that I must recuse myself from the decision with respect to the parts of the budget concerning grant funding, including the Legal Services Trust Fund, Justice Gap Fund, Equal Access Fund, Bank Settlement Fund, and Grants Fund, due to personal financial issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Stallings, not present. Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
10 ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, that moves us on in our agenda to closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda. We did have a speaker to this, so we know that the public is aware of it. This is under Government Code Section 11126, Sub C7, to consider real estate. I believe we should all have received, or will be receiving very shortly, a link to come into the closed session. So we'll see you all there. As always, we will come out afterwards if there's a report. Well, we'll come out to let the public know whether there was any reportable action. Thank you, everyone.
We are now recording.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for everyone who has been patient as with the board met in closed session pursuant to our posted agenda. It is 5:05 PM. The, there is no reportable action from the closed session. I certainly appreciate all the trustees for hanging in there for the hour, a couple hours, actually. And members of the public who might still be with us, thank you for your patience. This meeting is adjourned.